Good evening. Welcome to the May 15th, 2023 Kinston Board of Education Board Meeting. It's 7:01. We are starting a bit late due to our retirement reception out in the other room. At this point, I would like to introduce River Trimmer from second grade at Timmins to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. And I think Dr. House? Yes. Thank you very much. Oh, River, we have something for you, honey. Okay. Thank you very much. And we're going to call the roll. Mr. Pendleton?
Mr. Boganski?
Here.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Here.
Dr. Kraus?
Yeah.
Mr. Manning?
Here.
Mrs. Troutman?
Here.
Thank you.
Welcome to the May 15th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Kinston Local Schools of Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, each Board Member received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item via the Electronic Board of Education Agenda System. Board Members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Treasurer for information concerning the agenda and to request additional information if needed. As a result, voting at the meeting may appear rushed and without adequate discussion. This is because the Board has thoroughly reviewed the agenda items, done their research, and arrives with the meeting ready to vote. The agenda is available for public view via the District Website three days prior to each Board Meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. There are two opportunities for public participation during the meeting as indicated in agenda items designated as "public participation." The first is Hearing of the Public on Agenda Items, where the Board will listen to comments from the public on any item on tonight's agenda. This is at the beginning of the meeting so that the Board can hear from the public prior to any voting. The second opportunity is Hearing from the Public on Non-Agenda Items. During this portion of the meeting, the Board will hear from the public on any topic relevant to the business of the district. All public comments follow the guidelines included in our Board Policy. At this time, we are going to... I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of April 17th, 2023, and the work session of May 1st, 2023, as recorded or corrected. May I have a motion?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Nasa. May I have a second?
Second.
Dennis, thank you. Mr. Pendleton?
Hey, wait a minute. The May 1st meeting minutes? I was late, so I wasn't present for roll call, but yet, like, I voted. Do we have to put in there somewhere that I came late? It just looks funny that I'm absent at the beginning, but like, I voted during the meeting. You know what I'm saying?
Normally, we cite minutes upon when you entered so that it can be a part of the record, so we'll make sure that it does. So if you came in five minutes late, it says...
Yeah, I think.
You're able to vote and the record shows that instead of the roll call.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make sure.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Mr. Boganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Commendations at this point. We have quite a few at this meeting, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sayers to lead the Commendations.
Yes, thank you very much. And at the outset here, I would like to introduce Assistant Superintendent Dr. Katie Poe, who is going to present our first commendation.
Thank you. It is my honor to recognize Timmins Elementary School as a 2023 recipient of the Ohio Department of Education's Purple Star Award. This award is bestowed upon schools that demonstrate a significant commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. Timmins completed all of the requirements for this award. This is actually the second time they have received this recognition. So at this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Rogelain.
Dr. Poe, hang on one second. I think we're getting a little bit of feedback. Oh, that's much better. Now I can interview. Thanks. Done.
At this time, we will move into the recognition of our retirees. And to kick off that process, it's Jeremy McDevitt.
I know, I could've. Good evening and thank you. I'm actually going to recognize two of our classified staff tonight, Renee Ebelender and Susan Matsko. Renee actually retired back in November and was with Kinston School District for 17 years. She started working in nutrition services back in 2006, but then after four years working in nutrition services, she became a bus driver here for the district. Always maintained a great rapport with her students and families, and we certainly miss her, especially as a bus driver, because as you all know, we have a driver shortage. And so I keep reaching out and telling Renee that we have great incentives for our retirees to come back and substitute for us, so we may not see the end of Renee. Susan Matsko worked here in the high school for 31 years in our kitchen and has spent the last three years actually as our kitchen manager. I got to know Sue pretty well when I was principal of this building. She's held various positions throughout the food service operations in her time here, and she said in retirement she plans on traveling, spending time with her family, and she does have six grandchildren. She really wanted to be here tonight, but she said it was her daughter's birthday, so that took precedent over this, but she wanted to thank the Board and she appreciates the time served here, so congratulations to both of them. Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce a Principal at KIS, Julianne Walker.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing Janet Austin. Where's Janet? You guys stand, Janet? Janet has 33 years of experience as an elementary teacher. She began her career as a substitute teacher for four different districts before landing her career position here in Kinston. Janet has been teaching fifth grade in Kinston schools for 32 years. She has taught fifth grade the entire time but has been in three different district buildings: Timmins, when it housed 3 through 5, the old KIS-ELC building that was torn down, and now the present-day KIS. Janet looks forward to hiking and kayaking and spending time with family and friends. We thank Janet for her dedication to her students and hope she has a wonderful retirement.
One more time.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce our High School Principal, Mr. Tom Dubham.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to recognize three of our Kinston High School staff members retiring, all from the same department, so it's definitely going to be a loss. First, Ellen Larkin. Before coming to Kinston, Ellen taught 19 years at a middle school in Connecticut, and she's now taught for 20 years here at Kinston High School. As an Intervention Specialist, Ellen has led the Special Education Team as Department Head for now 11 years. She excelled in collaborating with teachers in multiple content areas but spent most of the time in the math department teaching algebra and geometry. Ellen is looking forward to spending quality time with her first grandchild in July and is planning a trip to Europe in her near future. Our best wishes and congratulations to Ellen Larkin. Next, Daryl Major, KHs Educational Aid. Daryl Major has been employed by Kinston Local Schools since 1995. As an Educational Aid, she has served hundreds of students with special needs. Her work, like that of most Educational Aids, is not as transparent to others. Daryl has taken care of not only students' academic needs but also their life needs. She enjoyed observing her students every year as they continued to progress and crossed the stage of commencement. In retirement, Daryl will be enjoying quality time with her grandchildren as well as beginning to plan a cruise to Alaska with her husband. We thank Daryl for her dedicated service to our students and wish her all the best.
I think I'm going to go right into Commendations for the high school.
Are we not doing Terry? Can I do Terry?
Okay. Yeah, he is not here, but we're going to... Yeah, we'll redo. Sorry about that. Terry Markoff, KHs Special Education Teacher. Prior to Kinston, Terry worked at Positive Education Program, also known as PEP, in the Akron City Schools. He's been a teacher at Kinston High School now for 22 years. Terry is very effective in connecting with his students, building relationships that result in the success of their academic endeavors. Terry has also been a dedicated advisor to the National Honor Society. Terry will enjoy retirement spending many hours outside, as we know, running, climbing, skiing, paddling, hiking, and of course woodworking. We thank Terry for his hard work over the years and hope he has a wonderful retirement.
And I would also like to say on behalf of our Board of Education, thank you so much to all of our retirees for your years of dedicated service to our students and community. Your work is much appreciated and you will be blessed. Thank you again. Congratulations.
I am honored to present academic commendations to three outstanding senior students. The first is Victor Como, who is the only Kinston High School student ever to be receiving both a high school diploma and a bachelor's degree in the same year. Victor took full advantage of the College Credit Plus program beginning in the seventh grade through Kent State University. He had a combination of classes in person here at Kinston, CCP online, and CCP in person on campus. He worked through every semester, including summer sessions as well. This is an exceptional accomplishment and demonstrates Victor's high academic achievement. I congratulate Victor for his diligent work ethic and time management skills. Victor will be receiving a Bachelor's of Science in Mathematics and will continue his graduate studies at the University of Alabama in the Master's Program with a concentration in computer science. Congratulations, Victor.
Congratulations on being a number one in class. Good job.
The next two seniors also deserve recognition for their efforts in earning college credits towards an associate's degree. Ella Worrell, who could not be here tonight, earned her Associate of Science in Nursing from Sinclair Dayton Community College, and she will be continuing her studies at Wright State in the field of nursing and working towards her RM. You can maybe give her a clap. And finally, Alan Studers, Associate of Science in General Engineering from Tri-C, is still in progress, but it is worth the recognition for all of the work he has put into his college studies. Congratulations to Alan, who will be headed next year to Case Western Reserve to study aeronautics, mechanical engineering.
Again, congratulations to all these students. They've made incredible accomplishments. Great job. We're very proud of you.
So it is that time of year again to recognize our speech and debate accolades. We begin with Mr. Boudres, who is the recipient of the McCandless Award, which is presented to the Outstanding Middle School Speech and Debate Program in the Cleveland District. Mark McCandless, who passed away in 2021, was the head coach at Brexwell Broadview Heights High School for over a decade, and the award was created in his memory. Given that KMS placed first at Middle School States in four out of the six Middle School Speech and Debate events in March, the team demonstrated that this award was definitely well-deserved, and I personally know Steve has been working tremendously hard building up the interest and the numbers at the middle school. This will ultimately benefit the high school program in the future. Congratulations, Mr. Boudres.
This is where we shamelessly plug speech and debate, mock trial, all the great events. Victor's a prodigy of mock trial. See where you can go, kids.
The Kinston Middle School team competed in 12 tournaments this season with a total of 43 different students competing and another 12 showing up just to practice. The team's model for the year was "just have fun," but their hard work and preparations resulted in many students placing in the top six, while actually 87 times they did during the season. The middle school team's success is due to the many parents and high school students that helped coach them up. So let's meet those middle school members here. We have first Brooke Carlson, who competed in Congressional Debate. Reagan Karns competed in Public Forum Debate. We also have Pearl Johnson in Declamation. Gillian Ragsdale in Public Forum Debate. And Catherine Tobin in Interpretation.
I love the parade of parents. This is like making me very happy. Good job, Dan. Yeah, totally.
Okay, this time I will take a motion to approve all the commendations. Oh, you still have one more?
I have one to go.
Did I miss one on the other?
The top one. She went to the...
First one.
Yep. So this last one. One last speech and debate commendation goes to a senior captain on the high school team and a state champion in Declamation. This took place in the Ohio Speech and Debate Association State Championship earlier in the school year. Eden Truex, who is not here, she's also at some great camp. But Eden is the first student in Kinston High School history to achieve this honor. She earned 15 ones, and Steve, that means that's like the top in like perfect scoring and ratings in her event. So to gain the state championship in Declamation, Eden has earned the degree of Outstanding Distinction from the National Speech and Debate Association and the Academic All-American Award, which is only earned by less than 2% of those competing in speech and debate. Eden gives credit to Mr. Boudres and Mr. Schnuck, who recently passed away, for all of her success in speech and debate. Eden is headed to Ohio University to major in mathematics. Congratulations on this remarkable accomplishment.
Again, congratulations to everyone involved with our speech program. These accomplishments are just fabulous. Again, very proud of our students and our staff and we did things that are happening. Thank you so much.
I'm almost done.
Take your time.
So this leads into our high school board report that I will be sharing. So tonight, we would like to highlight two other esteemed high school programs that continues to be recognized and awarded for their phenomenal student work. First, the Kinston High School Literary Magazine, Janus, was honored by Realm with a Superior rating for the 2022 edition, and Kinston Janus was one of only three other high schools in the state of Ohio that earned Superior. The Realm Award stands for Recognizing Excellence in Art and Literary Magazines and are judged by the National Council of English Teachers. There were 262 other high schools that entered the 2022 National Writing Contest, so a Superior is a top-level rating, and it's quite an accomplishment for the team as well as our advisor, Mr. Tony Marchese, who really displays excellent leadership guiding our writers through the publishing process. I know he's assisted many Janus members over the years, developing effective critical thinking writing skills for all of them. We also recognize the two former lead edits from the 2022 magazine, and that's Maximus and Michael Yost. They were, again, the lead editors and led a talented group through the process last year. So the 2023 edition, Janus, has been completed. It's been published, and it will be submitted to Realm in the very near future, and ratings won't be announced until next January of 2024. So our board tonight will receive a copy of both copies from '22 and then from '23. So just take two and pass it down. Thank you. Finally, I asked for you to direct your attention to the screen. Many of you witnessed the Kinston Art Show two weeks ago, and you were able to see the wonderful variety of K-12 artwork. Kudos to our K-12 art staff, our teachers, their creative instruction, you know, that they share with our students on a daily basis. Tonight, we highlight KHs upper-level art students and some of their best work that were recognized and awarded in multiple art shows throughout the state of Ohio. And it's a little slideshow video. I know Board Members, I don't know if you can look up or stand to the side, but please enjoy. Thank you.
Just a huge congratulations to everybody. It just makes me so happy that we continue to create a space that each child, student, as they grow throughout all of our schools, can continue to learn and grow the way that they choose to. So I'm just so proud of all of them. I don't even know most of them, but it's great to see. So at this time, I'll take a motion to approve all the accommodations.
A motion.
Thanks, Dennis. May I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else have any comments? No? Okay. Mr. Pendleton, can you call her, please?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Trautman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to pause for 35 seconds, but I'm not going to time it. But I'm going to dismiss everyone who would like to leave the meeting.
Do you want Drew to present first, or no?
Do what?
Do you want Drew to present first?
I can't hear you.
Drew should present first with the people here. Drew, the next thing.
It's up to you. I mean, I don't... If people want to leave, then I was going to give them minutes to leave, but if you guys want me to make them stay, we can do that, too.
More audience for Drew.
Okay, well, I guess we'll continue on.
At this time, I would like to introduce Drew Truexberry from the Kinston Alumni Association.
Mrs. Trautman, thank you for the 35 seconds that it took this old man to get up here.
Yep. No problem. We need to please.
We have 30. Drew Truexberry up here, and I'm going to give a brief summary of the Kinston Alumni Association. For those of you that are not familiar, the Alumni Association was formed in 2017. It was formed with the district and the great legacy of Kinston and Auburn schools in mind. It was formed with the help of Katie McGrath and Jennifer Miller, myself, Nasa Gaskins, and Matt English. Currently, we are very, very proud of some of our major accomplishments, which are the Kinston Alumni Hall of Fame, which is open to all students, former students and faculty members. So those of folks that have just retired, you may be eligible in five years, I believe it is, for nomination into the Hall of Fame, and we look forward to those. Also, those folks that are retiring are eligible for membership in the Alumni Association. So I look forward to being hit up by us here shortly. Victor, congratulations wherever you are. That was phenomenal. When you start a rocket company and build electric cars, will you donate back to the Alumni Association, please? We appreciate that. We also are very proud of the Military Wall of Honor that we have out here. We have over 80 honorees on that wall. We believe that Kinston and Auburn have done an amazing job over the years of military service, and we do everything we can to thank those who have served this country. And if you know of any alumni that did serve our country and are not members of the Military Wall, please let us know. We'd like to make sure that they're recognized accordingly. We do have a presence all over social media, which you can find us. We regularly update stories about Kinston, whether it's athletics. Sadly, we let everybody know when we have alumni pass on, and it's a great way for us to communicate to alumni all across the world. We accumulate artifacts, and we're in the process of cataloging and building out a, what will ultimately be a museum, and looking for those types of things. So there's a lot of families that are still around in Bainbridge area and Auburn area that have letter jackets or what have you. We'll take all of that. Other couple of things that we're really proud of are the memorial scholarships that we have in place. That has been funded by the Friedman family, and that was put in place four years ago, I believe it was, and with an endowment from the Friedman family in honor of their daughter Carrie, who was an avid lover of the outdoors. Carrie tragically died in a motor vehicle accident, and she loved the outdoor field experience, the out west trip, as it was called, back in the 1900s, when I was in school. So we, through that grant, actually through the foundation, we provide scholarships to young men and women that want to go on that experience. Last year, we funded, partially funded, two scholarships. There isn't any field experience this year, but we're already ramping up for next year, and we hope we'll have a bunch of qualified young men and women apply for that. The other thing that we do, and this is coming up with graduation around the corner, is we honor our legacy families, and those are families that have students that are going through and graduating from the school district, and they had a mother, parent, aunt, uncle, grandparent, what have you, also go through the school district. It was very exciting to be a part of that. Myself, my wife and I have two children that went through the K-12 at Kinston, and being a part of that legacy family is really important. So this year, we actually have 32 legacy graduates, which is pretty cool. So as things start to get back, and the world is normalizing, we're getting back into the rhythm of all-class reunions, class reunions, and we're really working hard to become that resource hub for alumni around the world. When they think about Kinston, we want them to think about the Alumni Association and then use us as the conduit to get to other alumni and to know what's going on. So that's what we have. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to let you all leave. But don't forget, seniors, to make sure that we have your forwarding information so that the Alumni Association can follow you and your success after you graduate. Okay, we're going to move along with board committee reports. Tom, do you have anything to report on finance? No?
No, we have not had a meeting.
No, we have not. We have not had a meeting. Okay, policy, Nasa or Beth?
Policy met on April 11th. We reviewed about 30 policies, and they are on the agenda for first reading at this board meeting. It was a variety of suggested changes by NEOLAW. For some of them, some of them are technical corrections, some are because of new laws, and we have a couple of new policies to that NEOLAW approved for us.
Beth, do you have anything to add? Okay. KCAC, I think you guys did have a meeting.
No, we met... Yep. So we met last Thursday. What day was it? Okay, Thursday. Yeah, and took the opportunity to invite Steve and Katie McGrath to talk with the group, because we've been talking... What they took on is educating the public about school funding. So timely, since we have a resolution to put levy on the ballot tonight. The group sort of shared some history. What we're really looking for is, like, how can that group fit best with Kinston? You know, because they're doing really great work. It's a really amazing group of people on the committee. But we don't want to waste anybody's time, right? We want work to be purposeful and meaningful, so...
I have nothing.
Okay. Curriculum, Beth and Nasa.
Curriculum also met on April 11th. We went over the highlights of the strategic plan. Overview of curriculum materials that were presented to the parent committee for review was shared with us, and they're on the agenda of this board meeting for first reading under Section 16K. So those are on there. We talked about the review of the CC programs and the different opportunities for our students with CCP. We talked about career readiness and meeting the students' needs each year. And we reviewed the gifted program, about placement within the gifted program, and the numbers within the program, and talked about the gifted program.
Beth, do they have anything else you'd like to say?
I don't think so. I think we reported all this at the last meeting. So I don't think I have anything more to add. Oh, and Kate, I'm sorry, back to policy. If you guys didn't see it, Katie had a good summary of all the policy updates in her curriculum.
Yeah, Katie, that was very helpful. I really appreciated that, the quick synopsis of what I needed to highlight when I was reviewing the policies. So we appreciate that. Okay, Tom, technology?
Yeah, we did have a district technology committee meeting and numerous updates, two pages of stuff that's going on. So the highlights of it is the updating the Wi-Fi network. So John Molnar, he already presented to us at the meeting before, and it was more of a recap of that, and the new batch of Chromebooks that they're putting into place. Lots of talk among the technology teachers on sharing what's working with their students and what they need to change and stuff like that. But it's very exciting that they're adapting and changing as technology is drastically changing. There was talk about AI and how that is going to impact our students. So they had very good, really thought-out discussions on the direction of that, how they plan to handle that type of stuff. So very good, very good meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, safety. I know you met last month. Have you met since then?
Not since then, though.
Okay. And then Kinston, Inc. Beth was unable to attend, so I went. And it was the presentation from Mr. Klimkowski on kind of the same thing that Adam, Mr. Pender did at the meeting last month regarding their career readiness, developing a profile for each student. And we had some really good discussion with the community members that were there. The business owners were very interested in how this program was going to be carried through to the high school. We talked to Mr. Gaberman about it. There was a lot of good questions posed. So I think this is really going to lend itself well transitioning to eighth graders into high school with our career planning and college planning for them, kind of helping them hone on what classes they wanted to start focusing on and really being thoughtful when they're picking their class schedules. So it's still a lot of work in progress, and I think there's, you know, still more work to come. But it was very, very well received by our community members that were present. So we are very thankful for the presentation. It was really great conversation, so... Steve, do you have anything to add because you were at that meeting? No?
Again, an excellent summary.
Sure. Okay, now we're going to move along to the birthday book. So Mr. Sarris, I'll pass that on to you.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Trautman. We do have a birthday book to present this evening. We do have one of our board members, Mr. Berganski.
I think I'm going to be 40 this month.
Celebrating a birthday next week, I believe it is, maybe next Tuesday, I think. But I certainly want to take a moment here and thank Katie Poe and her staff for taking the time to select the book specifically for Mr. Berganski. And I just wanted to share a little bit about that book. It's titled "Love That Dog" by Sharon Creech. And just again, a quick little summary here. Jack tries to explain to his teacher, Mrs. Stretchberry, that boys do not write poetry and that he has no interest in doing so. Initially, Jack imitates classic poems read to the class for fun and is surprised when Mrs. Stretchberry asks if she can put one of his poems on the board. As he is exposed to more poetry and he begins to write more complex poems, which are displayed on the board, Jack begins to open up and tells of his love for his dog, Sky, who has passed away. Mrs. Stretchberry asks Jack to write to Mr. Walter Dean Myers, a poet whose work "Love That Boy" she read to the class in order to invite him to visit their school. The author agrees, and after the visit, Jack sends a thank you letter to him along with a copy of his own poem titled "Love That Dog."
Happy birthday, Dennis.
I don't know if that's because I just got a dog or a poetry thing, and I just found out that Miles Garrett of the Cleveland Browns is a very big poetry guy, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
So guys can do poetry, no problem. Thank you. I don't like birthdays, but that's all right because I get older.
Okay, next is hearing of the public on agenda items. Do we have any parts? No? Okay. Moving on to financial items, and I will turn this over to Mr. Pendleton.
Do you want to take a motion a second before my comments?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. You know what? I'm a little off today. I apologize. I took some cold medicine. It's making me a little fuzzy. Okay, so I will need a motion for A through D. Thank you, Nasa. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
Under the donations, for the lawnmower that was donated for the baseball field, it says from the Field of Play. What is the Field of Play? Is that an organization or what?
I don't know.
Jeremy, do you know?
Phone a friend out there.
Under the donations, it says we got a lawnmower donated for the Kinston High School baseball field, and it says from the Field of Play. What is the Field of Play?
Field of Play is a company that they work with just for some of the equipment and stuff that they've done up. They actually, I believe they're working with companies that have pulled it up on turf and stuff.
Okay. So it's a company, it's a business?
Yes, it's a business.
Thank you kindly. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
If we get the turf, we won't need the mower.
Anybody else?
You want to make some comments?
Would you mind making some comments on whatever you need to comment on?
Thank you. Of course, thank you for the donations. Items B, C, and D. On item B, healthcare coverage. And the language is included in the resolution. But after review with the provider consultant and advisory committee, the annual rates for our medical coverage inflation is going to go up by 7%. But I did want to highlight a couple of items. We see post-pandemic, and what we've been reported to from our consultant is that quite a bit more inflation than just the 7%. In fact, the medical provider recommended over 10%. Of course, that is a process that we co-manage. We co-manage that with the staff, and you do have a very active healthcare benefits advisory committee. So I think that there's some lending of credibility here to that process. And ultimately, those folks participated in the conversation that are getting us to 7% because there's some additional step therapy, some prescription medication agreement that they're going to make with this to lower the rates. It is the second-largest expense to the district behind salaries and benefits. So actively managing this is the key. And again, just wanted to give you some good news there that the decisions you've made by bringing on the consultant and some of these active management decisions are paying off. But we want to bring that recommendation forward every year for the increase. The dental insurance coverage is in the same area of insurance. The district has had Medical Mutual for its dental insurance for many years. And I think this is a decision that's reflected of being more competitive in this environment. While the rates for merging or accepting Delta Dental as your provider are the same, the network is larger and the discounts are deeper. So via claims, this should be a good financial decision, and we'll monitor that moving forward. The final item, D, five-year forecast. As you're aware, districts in Ohio are required to submit five-year forecasts every November in May. November is the primary forecast, May is considered the update. It is the district's primary financial planning tool and our goal as interim with the Educational Service Center is to provide a bridge for you and Seth. So we've had meetings with Seth already. We're including him in the process. We're using the newer software, frontline technologies so that we can start to really get into a level of detail that you've asked for reflective, so we can turn every line of both revenue and expense into a five-year forecast and get as far down in the weeds as we want as looking at the inflation around diesel fuel for buses, so great tools there. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to highlight for everybody that doesn't know behind the scenes how much work this is. The five-year forecast, certainly we all got it. It's pages and pages and pages. That's a ton of work, but also the advisory committee that I, that I am a part of on behalf of the board for the healthcare. That committee worked really hard and worked really well with Mr. Pendleton, Mr. Sayers and the rest of us to really kind of come to a happy agreement to, to get this increase where we can manage it. Nobody wants an increase, but we all know it's coming, so I just want to thank you, Mr. Pendleton, Mr. Sayers and our advisory committee for all the work that they did to come together to
Thank you.
to get to this agreement, so. Anyways, okay, moving on, so I guess we'll call roll now.
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the resolution for the permanent improvement levy? 1.35 mils for five years. And I'll take a motion and then we can have some discussion on it.
Also move.
Thank you, Nasa. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, do you want Brian to do it or do you want to do it?
Sure, I can make a couple of comments if that would be okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to point out three things here before the board votes on this item. I wanted to highlight some things. First of all, again, I know we've talked about this in the past, but again, I wanted to highlight that only 13% of the school districts in Ohio do not have some type of a permanent improvement or maintenance type levy. And here at Kinston, we are included in that 13%, and certainly this is very much a need. As I look at this and think about what Kinston needs, this is, this is right up there. This is very important to our school district and being able to take care of our buildings, our bus fleet and the host of expenses that go along with those things. And so again, I wanted to highlight that. The second thing I wanted to mention is the board may recall when we were having this discussion in the fall, we were looking, looking at a permanent improvement levy for a continuing period of time. And after we've had some further discussion with our administrative team over the last several weeks, we feel administratively that probably the more prudent way to, to move forward would be to propose a five-year limited term levy as compared to a continuing levy, which obviously continues for an indefinite period of time. The team felt that, you know, with a five-year term, we very much, we want to be accountable to our taxpayers. We recognize that the district belongs to the community and belongs to our taxpayers. We want to be good stewards of the tax dollars that are entrusted to us and should the community choose to support this permanent improvement levy, this would then give us five years where we could demonstrate and follow through on what it is that we want to do with these funds before seeking renewal of that levy five years down the road. So again, I wanted to highlight that because that is a different course of action from what we discussed in the fall. And finally, I wanted to mention one other item. I have had a couple of questions from various people asking if we're, essentially if we're making it work now by transferring $575,000 from our general fund to the PI fund, why would we ask for a PI levy that would generate approximately $1.3 million? And the answer to that question is frankly, we're not really making it work with the $575,000 that we're transferring on an annual basis. I think I may have highlighted at a previous meeting, for transportation alone in order to stay on a current replacement cycle for school buses and vans, that requires $400,000 a year. Again, that's just for a replacement of three school buses and a van of which we have 10 every year. That's before we get into any kind of maintenance items, any boiler work, any roofs, parking lots, doors, windows, resurfacing of tennis courts, tracks, fencing repairs, all those are PI-type items. And you can see very quickly, we're in the process of replacing a boiler at the Gardner and our quote is right at $300,000. So you can see with one boiler and just replacing our buses, we're already at, at $700,000 a year. So one of the things that we're looking at here is not only those big ticket items and being prepared to deal with those expenditures, but also being proactive and making sure that we're on a plan of replacement with items such as classroom furniture. Currently, we don't have a cycle to replace classroom desks, tables, chairs, cafeteria tables, those types of items. And of course, we've got quite a few of those items across the buildings in our district. So again, being able to, to build some type of a replacement cycle is one of the key reasons why we're looking at a PI levy that would generate this 1.3 because that is truly what we need to maintain our buildings, take care of our maintenance and also make sure our bus fleet stays current and up to date as well. So again, I just wanted to highlight those three quick items for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, I trust nobody has any questions, so we're going to move to.
It might be, it might be helpful just to procedurally talk about the next steps, just so we have it as a matter of record, if that's okay? Okay, so this is the first of two resolutions, so for both our listeners, watchers and for the board, this is the resolution of necessity, so we're declaring a need. Following the declaration, declaring a need, we will certify and seek the county auditor's certification on this. So the estimates that we've put together, that legal counsel put together, will be certified. That certification will then help us prepare resolution number two. And resolution number two needs to be voted on and in place here in the next couple of months, so we have some time to do that and to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's with that, but I just wanted to give you a step-by-step playbook there. Thank you.
Hey, Ryan, I am not going to be present at the June board meeting. Is this like a, do we need like four out of five yes votes on these resolutions?
It is not a super majority that I know of, but we can schedule it accordingly.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if anybody else is going to not be at the June meeting.
Okay, so we will check with schedules. It does qualify for a special board meeting with plenty of advance notice, so we'll make sure we work around your schedules.
And yeah, and if you, if it can pass with three, then I think we're fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Good?
Good. Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next we're going to move on to certified personnel and I will need a motion for A through D. Second. Thank you, Nasa and Beth.
Can I, I'd like to, just, you're covering through to D.
Yeah.
The grievance settlement agreement, I understand why the school's doing it. I guess I just don't understand the whole concept. If you had a couple of kids in a class for a couple of days because there's a teacher out that we're going to pay per student when they're on the clock, I guess I'm a little disappointed the grievance even came out, to be honest, and I, I just don't agree with it. I understand why we settled for financial purposes with lawyers and stuff, but it's very disappointing to me. I just want to let that be known. Somebody asked me to do a favor, you know, watch your kid for a little bit. It doesn't make sense that a grievance was filed, so. Just wanted to reflect my opinion on that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Mr. Berganski?
No.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number nine, classified personnel. May I have a motion for A through C? Thank you, Nasa. May I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Tom. Any comments, questions? Mr. Pendleton, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have, we will take a separate motion for E. May I have a motion for E? Nasa, thank you. May I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Pendleton, can you call the roll?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Wait, Dennis was supposed to abstain.
You said D, you said A through D, right?
No, I
This is E.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said A through E. I didn't hear you correct. I have to abstain if you're going A through D.
Yes, thank you. I was going to correct you.
I thought you were going A through D. My apologies.
No, I was just waiting till everyone was done and then I was going to circle back to you.
All right, personal actions as you abstaining. Thank you.
Yes.
And Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, and then we have a separate motion for F as well.
Also move.
Thank you, Nasa. May I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Beth. Any comments, questions? Okay, Mr. Pendleton, can you call the roll?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Item number 10, supplemental contracts. May I have a motion for A and B? Actually, I don't have an A. I just have a B. A is supplemental contracts, B is substitutes. Mine doesn't say A, it just says B, but I'm assuming there's an A if there's a B. May I have a motion for A and D?
Also move. One second.
Tom, Manning?
Tom, did you say something?
He moved.
He moved.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear. It's really hard to hear down here.
It is.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Pendleton?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number 11, exempt personnel. We just have A. May I have a motion for A? Thank you, Nasa. Second?
One second.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Pendleton, can you call the roll?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number 12, business operations. May I have a motion for A and B?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Nasa and Beth. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Pendleton?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number 13, teaching and learning. We only have A. May I have a motion for A?
So moved.
Thank you, Beth. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Pendleton?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 16, new business. May I have A through G? May I have a motion for A through G?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Beth and Nasa. Would you like to make any comments on the strategic plan before we vote?
Sure. I'd like to just take a moment to first of all, say thank you to our strategic planning committee that worked very diligently over these last two months. We had a committee of staff and community members of in excess of 50 people and met two times as a large group and then had other meetings with their individual subgroups and I wanted to thank them for their work as well as Russ Bennett from the Northeast Ohio ESC for facilitating the process and this was, process was really, at least from my standpoint, a lot of fun and very enjoyable to watch it kind of develop and come together. We started actually in the fall soliciting input through our Kinston conversations. We did a community survey just after the first of the year. Also had the opportunity to interview students and collect valuable feedback from them. And then all this information was used by our strategic planning committee to ultimately develop the plan that you see in front of here today with specific focus areas as well as objectives for each of those areas. This plan, and again, pending your approval, will provide us with a focus and a direction as we look out to the next three years, beginning with the 23-24 school year. And next step, again, pending your approval, would be for our administrative team to develop specific action steps related to what we have in the strategic plan. And then one of the things that we think is very important is to make sure that we provide frequent updates to the board and to our community at large in terms of how we're doing with the implementation of this strategic plan. So again, just wanted to thank everyone for their work with that and we look forward to, now that we have a plan, implementing that plan and ultimately making great things happen for our students, so. And there's one other item I just wanted to highlight real quick in this section, calendars, a little bit of a unique item here. You see, we have the 24-25 calendar, the work that we're recommending for approval, but in addition to that, we're recommending an amendment for the 23-24 calendar, which builds in an additional professional development day for Tuesday, September the 26th, and I did want to highlight that because this is a little bit deviation from our original calendar and our rationale for that is, again, administratively and having conversations with our staff, really, we want to take and spend additional time talking about reviewing our safety measures, our safety protocols, procedures, training with the Bainbridge Police Department and really focus a large part of what we're doing in our August professional development. A large part of that will be centered around safety and security, which obviously is our priority. So what that means is we need to push some of the curriculum items into another time and there lies the need for an additional day and looking at some curriculum-type items as part of that September 26th date. So again, just wanted to clarify the rationale behind that specific recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great, Mr. Pendleton, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, just to, I know we're not voting, but just to highlight, we do have first reading for several board policies and name change of courses. We've talked about our incubator curriculum that's going to be implemented at the high school. It used to be called Business Management and changing statistics to statistics and probability. And also just to draw your attention to item K, first reading on curriculum, curriculum materials. Okay, item number 17 is hearing on, hearing of the public on not agenda items. Do we have any cards?
No.
Okay, very good. And that would lead us up to you, Mr. Pendleton, for your treasures report.
No additional comments.
Okay. Well, Steve, that would, you up next?
Just a couple of things. Speaking of safety that I mentioned just a few minutes ago, I did want to mention that a few weeks back, we did receive notice, Mr. McDivitt and his work when pursuing these various grants, we did finally receive notice that we received a 220 a $227,000 grant from the Ohio School Safety Grant Program. And we are planning to use these funds to upgrade and add security cameras, door control systems, and integrate video capabilities with radio communication systems. In addition to that grant, we also received a $20,000 grant that will be used for clock, cameras. And these are cameras that are automatic license plate readers that are part of a central database and within seconds can alert law enforcement if a vehicle connected to a wanted criminal or a missing person shows up in the system. So again, just wanted the board and our community to be aware that certainly it's great to receive these grant funds, something that we cannot count on on a long-term basis, but here and now certainly provides some important financial support for us. Want to thank Mr. McDivitt for his leadership in pursuing these grants. Lots of paperwork is involved. And again, thank you, Mr. McDivitt and his work. And now, as we move forward with implementing these items. Just a couple of other things real quick. Wanted to mention that our Academic Challenge Team can be seen this, their segment can be seen this Saturday, which is May the 20th, I believe, at 11:30 a.m. on Channel 5. Again, Academic Challenge Team, Saturday, the 20th, 11:30 a.m., Channel 5. And just in closing, it's a, it's a very busy month. We've talked many times, Mr. Gaben and I were just talking the other day, that it's a very busy month, but it's a month that's a lot of fun because we're obviously celebrating great things that our students are doing. And of course, the highlight is commencement, which will occur a week from tomorrow. And certainly want to take this opportunity to wish our class of 2023 the very best as they move forward and looking forward to that commencement program next Tuesday. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to have a motion to enter into executive session to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, or to negotiate with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance.
I'll motion.
Thank you, Dennis. May I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Nasa. And the board will enter executive session at 8:14. They have this first. I'm just following my agenda. Mr. Pendleton?
Mr. Berganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Sorry. I was moving on.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will not be taking any action, so if you don't want to stay, you don't.
Hey, Katie.